Live. Hi, everybody. We're going to give just a minute or two for for people to join us before we open. So as you're coming on, the only people you'll be able to see are the panelists, which are our leadership board and myself, Pastor Dan Worthman, and our executive pastor, Tim Nelson. All right, everyone, I'm going to open in prayer, and then we're going to begin our town hall meeting. So if you would pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for, first of all, the day of worship. Actually, even before that, for the blessing of another day of life. We thank you for saving us. We thank you for making us part of your body, your family. And we thank you, Lord, for the gift of the body, the church. We thank you that we don't walk this road of the Christian life alone. We thank you, and we have been becoming even more thankful, more appreciative, Lord, of all that you give us through the church body. Lord, this is a distant second best meeting virtually like this, but we are thankful even for the technology that allows us to do this. And so we just pray that your spirit would lead us, that we would have the unity of the spirit through the bond of peace as we meet tonight and beyond. And we pray that this meeting would honor you. We pray all this in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you all for joining us. What we're going to do is we have three segments to present. You can, you can use the question and answer function at the bottom of your page to to submit a question at any point. Chris Shad is going to collect all those questions, and it's going to moderate the questions at the end, so we'll save all the questions till the end. But I will give a brief transition report. Kurt is going to give a financial report, and then I will share with you what the leadership board and pastors have been presenting in the discussions about reopening. What I'm going to do right now is I am going to share a PowerPoint presentation. And I want to give you, first of all, let's see, did I miss a slide? There we go, the transition process. And bear with me just one minute. There we go. What has happened since I've gotten here in March and April, and the last two months that I've been here, I have been doing the get to know you interview meetings. I have had the the privilege of interviewing over 150 of you. That is not only to get to know you and for you to get to know me, but that is gathering a lot of data for the transition team. We have also had the the Church Health Survey open through the end of April. And forty percent of the congregation has responded, completing that. That's that's excellent. The chat people who who put out the survey consider, you know, almost a perfect score, getting fifty percent of the congregation. And anything over twenty five percent, they say, is very, very good. So I appreciate all of you who participated in that. Through my meetings and and through interacting with the leadership board, I've also made recommendations to the leadership board on who should be part of the transition team that have now been endorsed by the leadership board. The the transition team, as I'll show you what they're going to do in a few minutes, their their purpose is is basically to conduct a self-study of the church that will result in an assessment report with findings and recommendations for the leadership board. And it's my pleasure right now to announce the transition team to you. You can see their names on the screen. Amy Bodie, Dick Birkus, Mary Hansen, Kristy Muston, Garth Peterson, Michael Peger, Micah Schott, Wendy Speary, and Jeff Vlammink. And these are these five men and these four women are going to give a significant part of their next few months to meeting and going through the church self-study process with me. So what does that mean? What is, what is the timeline? And what can you, can you expect in this transition process? My goal, and I'm working with a transition team right now to schedule meetings, is to start in about a week and a half to start our transition team meetings. We will meet weekly all through the summer. Our goal will be to have our meetings and our self-study completed by the middle of August. And by the end of August, to publish an assessment report. And that assessment report summarizes all of the aspects of this church self-study that that have been have been reviewed by the transition team. It includes findings from that self-study, and it includes a number of recommendations to the leadership board and the and the pastors. From that point, when the assessment report is published, the leadership board will consider the transition team's findings and recommendations, and they'll make decisions about how to proceed. You know, the the transition team serves in an advisory role. They they can't make any final decisions by themselves. We are led under our former church government by our leadership team. And so they will consider the recommendations of the the transition team and decide what to do from there. From there, there's two scenarios leading to, you know, the question that I get asked most commonly, when will we be able to start our pastoral search? And the first scenario would be if the board approves some or all of the recommendations, but also determines that there are some of them, or even all of them, that really should be implemented before a pastoral search is launched. And for instance, one example, I I'm not anticipating this, but here would be an example from a previous church that I've done this process with. If major constitutional change is recommended, and the leadership board were to agree that that should be done, that that is probably a recommendation that should be implemented before a pastoral search is launched. I only use that as an example. Please don't hear that as I'm saying that major constitutional change is needed, but something of that level would be the kind of thing that would need to be implemented before a pastoral search is launched, because any pastoral candidate would would want to know what they are stepping into. So anything that would really affect the pastoral search process should be implemented before that process. Under that scenario, if any or all of the recommendations the board determined should be implemented before a pastoral search is is launched, we will we will jump right into the implementation of those throughout the fall. And I, you know, then it would be very likely that a pastoral search could be launched in in early 2021. That's one scenario. The other scenario would be if the board approves some of the recommendations or all of the recommendations from the transition team and determines that their implementation can be done concurrently or at the same time with a pastoral search. And if that is the conclusion of the leadership board, then I will lead the 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 leadership board and the pastoral staff and the implementation of these recommendations in the fall. But we'll also be able to launch a pastoral search in the fall. You know, a question I'm often asked is, is how long does a pastoral search take? You know, what I can tell you is the work on the front end takes about a month to two months to to do all the work on the front end that's necessary to post the position. Once the position is posted, it is, it is somewhat in God's hands in in raising up the man who God wants us to focus in on. That sometimes that can go quicker, sometimes that can go longer. There do seem to be kind of two windows, in my experience, particularly if we're looking for a pastor that that might have children of school age. And that is if a pastoral search can be launched early enough in the fall, it is very possible to find, conduct the whole process, find a pastor, and have him candidate, have him be called by the church, and have him move and be here right after the holidays. That's that's kind of the first window. If that window is missed, and especially if we we believe that some of these changes should be implemented before a pastoral search can be launched, the next window is if a search is launched early in a new year, January, February timeframe. There's, there's the timing to accomplish everything that needs to be accomplished in the search to potentially get a pastoral candidate who would move during the summer. That doesn't mean that there might not be a pastoral candidate who is called, who wouldn't move in the middle of a school semester, but most, for obvious reasons, most pastors with families would prefer to move at a at a semester break or in the summer. So that's why those two scenarios are somewhat important. And again, we we won't know fully how those are going to play out until we see what the recommendations of the transition team and what the leadership board believes their implementation is going to take. So that is the the that's the transition report. If you've got questions, you can certainly submit them, and we'll take them at the end. I will tell you that we will continue to give you updates all through the summer of what the transition team is is looking at. We certainly will give you updates at the end of the summer when the assessment report is published. And the the leadership board is determining, can we move immediately to a pastoral search, or the some, some of the recommendations that need to be implemented first? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kurt for a church financial report.
Hey, I've got four slides. The first slide covers the highlights of some of the ways that God has been providing through the people of Calvary for Calvary. There we go. Thanks. So we've been averaging twenty seven thousand, two hundred dollars a week since the shelter in place went into effect, which is actually a little bit higher than what we were averaging from January 1st up until the shelter in place started. When the shelter in place came about, we were already trending behind last year, and there was some trepidation on my part in how that would be, and yet God has provided. So that's been very encouraging. In mid-February, we decided that maybe a good idea if we could get our mortgage completely paid off. We were fairly close to it. And in just seven weeks, thirty eight thousand dollars was given towards that by the body of Calvary, and I'm happy to report, you know, for this, we're completely debt-free. So thank you for that. I've also observed as the shelter in place has been going on, we've continued to see strong benevolent fund giving. Over nine thousand dollars has been given in that period of time. Again, it just shows to me the care and love we have for one another, and that being seen through faithful giving. So to all of you, I thank you that giving has been strong. The next slide. The next slide, we're going to talk about where things stand today. I touched on this briefly, that we were a little bit behind last year's giving. Our fiscal year runs October 1st through September 30th. So at this point, we are, the end of April, we were seven months in. When the shelter in place started, we were behind. And since then, we've gotten to be a hundred and eight thousand behind last year. I refer to comparing things to last year just because last year's budget, general fund giving was one million, six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. So that's what this year's budget is. So that's why I make the comparison to last year. We're a hundred and eight thousand today behind that what giving was through the end of April last year. But I'm encouraged by the fact that it has not grown very much, only twelve thousand dollars in the last eight weeks. So we seem to be doing a fairly stable giving pattern. General fund expenses, we are under budget. We've got some, some of that is due to circumstances, and some of it is due to some planning we've done. We are a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We have identified expenses that we're going to avoid for the year. Our payroll and benefits are under budget by forty two thousand dollars. That's primarily due to a transition pastor coming in later than what we budgeted for. So it took us a while to find the right candidate. I'm extremely thankful for the candidate we we have. Dan, you are worth the wait. Our debt service, we touched on that. That saving twenty nine thousand dollars that we would have been paying out towards covering our mortgage, and that's covered thanks to the giving we've received to pay down the mortgage. Got some reserve funds that we've chosen at this point to not continue to contribute towards. Our budget did include contributions to that, and we've paused on them. And then the North Light, they actually came to us, our church plant, they came to us, I think in January, maybe even in December, and they were financially some financially independent, and we'd budgeted to give them support. And they actually offered to return that support to us. And we were humbled by that offer and accepted it. So that's another nine thousand dollars of savings. I list on the bottom what our current reserve funds are, just to give you an idea that they are healthy. So our current finances, I think, are quite healthy at this point. The next slide I've got touches on looking ahead, looking towards the year end. So if you take what we've been averaging since January 1st and project that weekly giving through the last five months, our shortfall would end up being at a hundred and sixty two thousand less than what we budgeted. So the hundred and eight thousand dollar shortfall that we see today would increase by fifty four thousand, four hundred. So that would, we we decided that we need to consider some additional ways to cut costs. We've worked with the pastors and staff. They have been helpful in understanding and trying to work through some and identify some ways that we can save. I've seen some good teamwork on this. And seventy two thousand dollars of opportunities have been identified. Some of it's due to the shelter in place, and some of it's not, like utilities are down due to us not being in the building, supplies are down, some of the events like BBS aren't going to be costing much since we can't hold them. But some things are not specific to that, such as we had in the budget, a hire for a children's ministry, family equipment, part-time person, and we've delayed bringing that person on board. So with these activities, anyway, I didn't list all of them, but seventy two thousand dollars worth of opportunities have been identified that we think will be achievable. So even with the projected shortfall that we have, we have a net positive cash flow at this point. We're projecting of twenty two thousand. I've got one more slide. This one, we thought it wise to consider what the COVID-19 may do. We don't know, obviously, how things are going to go out. I remember thinking, wondering how the shelter in place would affect us. I wonder how the COVID-19 may affect us. It may not. But we think it's wise to do some planning as a precaution. So we decided that knowing that Mayo has made some furloughing staffing reductions, we should consider what could potentially happen at Calvary with the giving. So we just put in a scenario of a ten percent reduction in giving over the last five months. If that were to occur, then we would project a shortfall of sixty three thousand, nine hundred dollars more than what we'd already projected, which is bigger than the twenty two thousand dollar plus side that we have. So we end up actually with a negative cash flow with that to happen of forty one thousand, five hundred dollars. So we decided, what do we need to plan for that or not, and kind of decided that it might be wise to be proactive regarding that. There are some benefits to doing it earlier than later because of what the government relief options are. We decided if we did it sooner, it gives, it makes sure that's still available. It gives our staff and team flexibility on when to do some of these things. So we've asked the staff to take a furlough. The sergeant staff are pastors and facilities manager, that's two weeks of time off. And for our hourly staff, it's kind of a fifty percent, about fifty percent reduction in hours worked per week. So those collectively will save us about forty thousand dollars, which we think is manageable for the year. The benefits that they receive will not be impacted by their time off. They still get healthcare coverage as they do today. So those are the things that we did. I really appreciate the staff and the being accommodating and understanding on this. They've been they've received it well. I also want to just emphasize that, you know, we are healthy financially, and the giving has been strong and healthy. So I don't want people to hear this and think that we are in any way trying to encourage stronger giving than you already are because is this being a threat to do that? It's not intended that at all. It's intended just to be a precaution and be proactive on it, and we think it'll be it'll lead to us being in healthy financial position for the end of the year. And I'll go back to Dan, as as Dan alluded to, submit questions if you have them, and we'll get to them at the end.
Thank you, Kurt. The last thing we wanted to address tonight is is the question that's on all of our minds. You know, it's been phrased as reopening, but I think the better way to to phrase the question is, as I have it on this slide, when and how do we begin to meet together in person, which even covers beyond our building? And when and how do we resume the use of our church building? We would like to start tonight, and really, this is what we're going to do tonight, is to present to you our values. What are values? Values are guiding principles. Values are the principles that guide our Calvary's discussions and decision-making. Different churches are going to have different values as they approach this question. So it's really not for us a matter of what other churches are doing. It's, it's what is important to us? What do we believe that God has guided us to as the principles that even as we talk, will frame what we're thinking about and the decisions that we make? So I want to share those values from the leadership board with you tonight. The first one is we value the safety and security of our church body, all our church body, and especially the the vulnerable, the most vulnerable. And I, you can see in the the bullet points there, you know, that that first one is a fact. While the COVID-19 infection curve has flattened, the threat of infection has not gone away. And no vaccine is yet available. So we have to keep that in mind. To us, that's, that's very, very important as we, as we think about the safety and security of our church body, and particularly the most vulnerable. So we, we are convicted that if we were to reopen prematurely, or we were to open without proper planning, we would actually put people at risk of infection. The thing about putting people at risk of infection is it's not something we can undo. If 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 infection were to happen through the, through exposure to our church building, or to anything that that we, you know, that is officially under the ministry of Calvary, and and someone were to die, that is not something we can undo. So this is a, this is a premier value for us that guides us as as we think through the discussions that we're having. Secondly, we value fully complying with the directives and guidance of the government that we're subject to. And and you may know this, but you know, if you if you have not seen this, you should read Romans 13. You know, here's the highlights of the first couple verses. And let every person be subject to the governing authorities. And then it goes on in verse four to say that, you know, whether whether govern, government officials are believers or not, they are under God's control. Government is actually God's servant for your good. And this is one of the ways, in other words, that that God cares for us. We may not agree at all times with with all of our government directives. But we, you know, we are told to be subject to them. Beyond even the directives, there's the, there's the best practices or guidelines. And our conviction is we want to follow the best practice guidelines. And as new information becomes available, or more accurate data becomes available, we want to adjust our practices accordingly. And as you all know, that's an ever-changing situation. So you know, that is something that is just going to be ongoing for us. A third value is we value keeping our congregation connected with each other. And so we are actually, what we're focusing mainly on right now is how do we bring people together in small groups? Why small groups? Well, one, it looks like under phase one, that may be the the easiest and first thing that we can do, but but even more, when we think about scripture, practicing the one anothers with each other is really what body life is all about. And so there is an opportunity as we gather people even more intentionally than we're doing right now to gather, bring people together in small groups, to live out the one anothers with of the Christian life with each other, even to reach out to others outside of our church. So that that, we want to prioritize that. That's, that's really what we're actively talking about, because that looks like the very first thing that we may be able to do. And you see the second bullet point, we'll seek to facilitate and actually even increase these connections, increase our small group involvement, both virtually, and then as it becomes safe to do so face to face. So bringing you all together, even before we can come together for worship, bringing you all together in small group settings to live out the one anothers of the Christian life is for us a high value. The third or fourth is we value and want to preserve the unique blessings of God in this pandemic. We have been recognizing that with all the inconvenience of this pandemic, there are, there are things that, there are lessons that God is teaching us. There are ways that God has uniquely blessed us that are not something that we should forget about, actually, that we should seek to preserve. Our home-led worship, for instance, has blessed us with a fresh sense of intimacy and authenticity as we've had a glimpse in into people's homes with those who have been leading us and singing in our services the last couple weeks. We want to preserve some of that. That that has brought a freshness that we we just think is a real blessing to our church body. Secondly, the fact that we've not been able to come together, our separation has actually, I think for all of us, or at least most of us, has increased our desire to connect with each other. We have missed each other. We have maybe realized we've taken for granted the ability that we had to come together. And so we believe it's actually a blessing of God that he has heightened our desire to connect with each other virtually, and 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 all the ways that we have, including our mini congregations and small groups. We want to preserve that. And then our times of prayer have fostered perhaps a deeper dependence and reliance upon God and his, his power. As we've prayed in our forty days of prayers, we prayed in other settings. And and the reality of this pandemic has pervaded our prayer times. We've realized, you know, that this is actually a blessing for us, that it has brought us together and united prayer, and we want to preserve that. So as we process the the decisions of how and when do we come back together, these are things that we we definitely want to preserve. The the fifth and last value is we value our staff and our ministry volunteers. And because we value them, we want to ensure that the burdens placed on them by the challenges of reopening are manageable and sustainable. The reality is that the requirements of additional cleaning and sanitizing and ensuring social distancing will increase the demands on our staff and volunteers. We're having a lot of discussion about, you know, what would need to be done with cleaning, sanitizing, ensuring social distancing. And among all the other things we we have recognized in those discussions is that there will be, you know, there will be more that are required of of all those who are are part in making that happen. And so we want to balance that. We want to balance that load as we, as we talk about this and process this. So those are, you know, those are the values that we're looking at, what's happening now. We are prayerfully discerning and discussing what reopening should look like and how God would have us proceed. We are all spending a lot of time at this. This is what every week looks like. Every Monday, the leadership board has been meeting, and this is the major topic of discussion. the major topic of discussion. Every Tuesday, the pastoral staff has been meeting, and this is the major topic of discussion. And then every Friday, the board, the leadership board and the staff connect for a brief meeting and we process this further. So that is ongoing. I want you to know that we're all spending a lot of time on this. But we're also, obviously, we're waiting to see what the Minnesota governor does on May eighteenth, whether the shelter in place order is lifted, and if it's lifted, what does that mean? What will will be lifted and be we be in a phase one type of scenario? We need we need that important information. And then finally, we are constantly seeking guidance from the Evangelical Free Church of America and from the North Central District as they are, and they're they're giving us a lot of guidance about that. So that is briefly what we're processing. That is the the guiding principles that we're processing it through. And that's kind of what's going on now as far of that, as far as that. I'm going to turn it over to Chris in just a second here, who's going to facilitate the question and answer session. We're we're only going to take about fifteen minutes worth of questions, but that doesn't mean we're going to ignore any question. If we don't get to one of the questions asked tonight, we will, we will follow up on them. We just wanted to keep this meeting to a manageable length, which is why we're limiting the on air question and answer session to fifteen minutes. So Chris, I will stop the share and turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Dan. So first of all, thank you, everybody, for dialing into the conversation here, and I would encourage you to submit your questions in through the Q and A function. And as Dan had said, if we're not able to get to all of your questions here this evening, we will for sure follow up afterwards with answers. Dan, there are some questions around the transition committee, the three of them really. Will the body see the report or the findings? What is the general scope of the transition team and how is it different from the leadership board? And is there a plan for moving forward if fall twenty twenty is not a reasonable time for to be starting a search? So if we're not able to start the search in the fall, when do we start the searches? I think how I would interpret that. Maybe you could take those first three that are related to the transition process.
I'll take them kind of in the order that that would flow. So first, the transition team. The the first of all, how does a transition team differ from the leadership board? There, you know, my my recommendation and the leadership board agreed is that it be a non leadership body. So there's no members of the leadership board or their spouses on the transition team. There are no members of the pastoral staff or any staff member or their spouses on it. I'm looking, I I look for a board that is representative of the church. So I want to see both men and women. I want to see individuals from different areas of the church. I want to, I'm looking for people as I interview who just demonstrate to me an obvious commitment to Calvary and its future. I'm also looking, you know, very honestly, for a high level of emotional intelligence and and relational wisdom the ability to get along in some of the discussions that we're going to have. The scope is we look at everything. They will, they will go through the data from the Church Health Survey. They will go through the data for from my interviewing. They will go through the data from the ministry reviews I'm doing and will do about a half a dozen other exercises that that are exercises, tools that interim pastor ministries has put together. The goal is to look at, you know, basically what is working well and and can be strengthened? What is not working so well? What are areas to strengthen? What are the opportunities? What are the things that God is putting in front of us that are not being acted on right now? And which of those should we be pursuing? And then finally, you know, what are the threats? Are there, you know, for instance, this pandemic is a threat, external things that that the church needs to take a look at and and make plans for how we how, you know, how we do deal with those. I'm just trying to scroll back to those questions. Let's see. The the assessment report and the report are findings of the transition committee. That is a decision of the leadership board, what to share from the assessment report. The leadership board can share all of it. They can share some of it. They can share a summary of it. That that will be up to them after they have the the report at the at the end of August. And then is there a plan moving forward in fall? Fall twenty twenty is not a reasonable time to be starting a pastoral search. Yeah, as I as I tried to share in my brief presentation. Let's say there are recommendations that need to be implemented, or we believe need to be implemented before a pastoral search is launched. That would be what my fall is spent doing is getting those all going so that we would have everything in place to launch a search in the January twenty twenty one timeframe. And, you know, so that 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 scenario too that that I presented earlier. So I think that addresses those those questions.
Good. Thank you. There are some questions. Kurt, there's a question here about the the financial question about the mortgage is paid off, the giving is stable. Why are we furloughing staff if we have a cash reserve? Maybe you could take that one.
Yeah, I so the cash reserve that we have, there are some capital projects that we know are looming. Got some work to do in our parking lot. We've got part of the church's roof is going to need to be replaced, re-shingled. The part over the sanctuary metal part. So those have some big dollars associated with them. So we've been planning that funding towards being able to cover those expenses that we know are going to be needed. So that's half of the answer, why we don't want to spend that money. And I should have touched on that initially. The other thing that I didn't really describe very well is that the with the relief that's available due to the COVID nineteen, I think all the staff or most of the staff anyway would not really have an economic loss by taking it as long as they take it between now and July twenty fifth. So between unemployment and the unemployment relief that is available right now, there wouldn't be an economic impact to our people. So it isn't really costing them money. Still, it can be a bit of a hardship to do that. So we know we're not asking them to do something. We're not taking that too lightly, but from an economic point of view, it isn't going to be a impact to them.
Thank you.
Good question.
Dan, there's a couple of other three questions about services. Would we even when we go back to face to face services, would we still have virtual options? Would we consider having three services or maybe more so we have like we do around Christmas time so that we have more opportunity for spacing? And would there be a point where we would have services that go perhaps against the government recommendations and meet corporately, but with some modifications, but not really as the in the way that the government might suggest?
I'm going to pass that last question on to Wayne. The the one question I can answer definitively is the virtual option. Yes, we I can, I can assure you, we're already working on this and it will be, it will be ready to go. We will, we will live stream our services. Once we start having services back in our building, we will live stream our services in perpetuity. You know, we 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 recognize that's actually one of the blessings that God has brought is this is a way to reach people. This is something that's going to be needed even for people who, for obvious reasons, their vulnerability are not able to come back as soon as they want. But we see it as as a a way to reach people that, you know, even beyond our congregation. So this has been a great exercise for us in figuring all that out and working on our technology. That will be all ready to go. I can't answer the question on the number of services. That's something we're still processing, but I'll let Wayne answer that last question.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, I'll try to take a swing at that one. First thing I would take a look at is when it comes to defy government recommendations, we probably would not cross that line until such a point in time that we felt that government was singling out religious activities. And as of now, specifically in the state of Minnesota and even guidance from the federal government, they've treated groups, large groups, all in the same thing. So movie theaters that have similar type of seating or the Guthrie Theater or whatever up in the cities, they're under the same type of limitations. So while we're still in that and while religious activities are not actually being singled out, then we believe a value would be that we should follow the God given and God ordained leadership that he's placed over us. If there ever became a time that it became apparent that religious activities were being uniquely singled out, which there may be some cases in some other states, but this is just me now speaking. I think I've really appreciated how Governor Walz has talked about religious activities being important to the health and well being of all Minnesotans. And if you take a look at some of the infographics that he's put out, religious activities are, you know, kind of in the middle of one of the dials that he has. It's not the last thing that's going to happen. So a little bit of thing there. I I don't foresee that happening, but that that's a swing at trying to answer that question.
Thank you, Wayne. Dan, a couple more questions related to the transition and the search. Why is a transition team necessary? Why not the leadership board being in that role? And can we make this available, the document that has our five principles, guiding principles around opening? I guess that's around the opening, not transition. And then another one around the transition to the the two search scenarios, do they allow for getting help from an outside search firm to assist in finding or narrowing down the candidates?
Yeah, as far as the document with the five values, yes, we will make that available. Also, this whole webinar will be recorded, so anybody at any future point can go back and watch it, but we'll make that that is available as a document. This two search scenarios. I have, I have a lot of experience leading searches, effective searches. So working with our district and with my search experience and my national contacts, I don't believe we will need to use a national search firm. Just to give you an example, the last search that I conducted at the last church brought in over two hundred and fifty candidates nationally. We won't have any shortage of candidates from my contacts and from working with the North Central District and the Evangelical Free Church. So if, you know, again, a search, a search firm, what are you doing? You're bringing in expertise and contacts. And that's one of the reasons I was brought here is I I have both in searches. Why is a transition team necessary? Why not the leadership board? It's both. It's it's the IPM model is is the strength of both. You have somewhat independent group representative of the congregation that that studies through a very intentional, short but intentional process that brings recommendations to the leadership board. Then you have their eyes and their wisdom weighing those recommendations. So in IPM's model, it's actually a stronger process because you have both groups. It does not take any longer. I, you know, if if for some reason we were not going to use a transition team, it would be the same exercises. So it doesn't take any longer to use a transition team, but it adds a lot of value as you get people who are are not presently in leadership and who who come from different aspects of the church to come together and work through that process.
Dan, there's a question about, I'm concerned about children during this time, wondering if there's an option to do VBS later in the summer.
Boy, that's a, you know, that's a hard one to speak to. Certainly, that's that's a question we'll we'll throw into the mix as we're talking about leadership board and pastors. But again, not even knowing what Governor Walz is going to do on May eighteenth. You know, we need to know that information. We need to know when the shelter in place order is lifted. What will those conditions be? You know, some states have begun to go into phase one, but phase two or phase three look like a long way off. You know, there's, there's a lot of unknowns. That is why we're meeting, by the way, as frequently as we're meeting is is because of those unknowns and because of the rapidly changing situation. So that's about the best I can, an answer I can give, other than to say that, you know, we're looking at all of these things in our ongoing discussions.
So there aren't any more questions at the moment. I would encourage anybody who has a question, please go ahead and submit it in. And if it turns out that you don't want to, or you think right now ask a question, or it turns out you have a question later. We are all very easy to find, easy to reach via email or a phone call to the church or a phone call to anybody on the board. We'd be happy to answer whatever questions you have. There's a question that did come in about doing, could backyard Bible clubs be done if VBS cannot be done?
Well, just briefly, because of who I'm married with, I know a little bit about what's happening in children's ministry. There has been some discussion about backyard Bible clubs. Again, we can't say whether they will happen. We don't know what guidance will look like, but that is something that is being investigated as a possibility. No guarantees. We don't know, but they are looking at it.
Okay, thank you.
I I, let's see.
Oh, there's a question here, maybe Kurt or anybody on the board. Any idea whether giving is down ten percent for strictly COVID, if there are other things behind that? Kurt, can you see that question? And you are muted if you want to answer.
Yeah, I was taking, well, trying to figure out, you know, there's a complicated things.
Yeah, right.
I don't think that COVID has caused giving to be down year to date. So I think we're only, that's a scenario that we projected, but to date, I don't think the giving was down prior to the COVID even being a thing. Why it's down, I, you know, we could speculate on that, but I think there's a lot of different reasons. We hadn't, you know, we've gone through a season of transition. The tax laws have changed recently. Attendance is less than it used to be at Calvary. We've done a church plant fairly recently, though, a number of things.
Did you catch that last question that just came in to Chris?
Yep. Yeah, are measures being taken to check in on the vulnerable and elderly in our congregation?
Tim, could you speak to that? You're kind of directly over that and aware of that.
Well, there's a few, look at it like sort of levels of strain that progressively gets smaller. We have the most vulnerable being watched by our care team headed by Pastor Larry and a bunch of great visitation people. We have Gene, our office person receptionist, calling all the over sixties. That's the second layer would be somewhat vulnerable. We then split up the congregation with the pastors and board members. And I believe nearly everyone who considers Calvary their church home was attempted to be contacted in the last three weeks. And even I think more important, we have been hearing as we check in that many congregations are meeting on a regular basis, covering number of the needs. Most of the small groups are meeting and even more frequently than they did prior to COVID. And of course, we've got the, we are Calvary sitting out there just urging through Pastor John's leadership people to check in if they have needs of any kind, from emotional to physical. So I would say we've got those different grids in place, but we would certainly plead with our Calvary congregation to reach out, as Brian said, and is one of his early videos, communication is critical, and we need you to tell us what your needs are also.
So there was a question, it disappeared about. I wonder if somebody answered it about small groups. Wayne, did you take that one?
I did. I took it offline because we're getting close. We said we'd be done at seven fifteen. Honestly, we don't know what that will look like. A value that we have a board is is enhancing the one another's and leveraging small groups more effectively as we go through the reopening phases, but we don't have more specifics at this time, exactly what that's going to look like.
Well, we did say that we were going to conclude at seven fifteen. Again, I I would invite you, if you have further follow up questions, please email them to the leadership board. I think this worked fairly well for our first time, so we will, we will continue to try and do regular town hall meetings to keep you updated. But let me close us in prayer. Father, we thank you again, even for the technology that makes this possible tonight. And and Lord, we do miss each other. We we do long to be back together again. We do long to be back together again. And so we ask for your leading and guiding, Lord. You have led us to these values that we're processing, all the decisions that need to be made through. Guide us, Lord. I pray even, Lord, that you would keep this Leadership Board and the pastoral staff regularly, and the minds and hearts of the people of this church body, that they would pray for us for wisdom, for a unity of mind. We want to see you glorified, Lord, through this. We want to see your church grow in every way, in health, and in new conversions, Lord, and reaching new areas through what you're doing in this pandemic. So we thank you. We thank you for the body. We thank you for our Lord Jesus Christ, and we pray in His name, amen. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you, all board members and Pastor Tim for being part of the panel.